I'm Jaiyaji. Mama? I'm Jaiyaji.
Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to this session of our Mentorme program. And because we have John with us and I won't go beyond that because I would want a situation whereby he would introduce himself by himself. Because it's usually said that the story is usually sweet from the horse's mouth. So let me just give over to Que at this very moment. Then Que would know the next thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Kamby and a warm welcome to John. It's good to have you in our program today. This has been a program that has been running since August. It is called the Mentorme program where we come to educate the community, the Tiabu comedians community, on some of the basic tools that they need to know as regarding the Wikimedia movement in general. So as you can see, my name is Que Friday. I am the project manager at Tiabu comedians user group. And I think we'll just take a quick run down and let's see how we can introduce ourselves before we hand over the mic back to John to take over. So it will be good for John to know who and who is here. Alright, so I think I'll just pass the mic to Jacob. I think he's looking at me now, Ivo. So kindly introduce yourself, Jacob.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. Jacob Joshua Anzama, a member of the Tiabu comedians user group, the G hub with Leslie Ode, G hub beauty. Thanks for being with us, John.
Thank you. Okay, so I can see another face is looking at me. This is Inyani. Please kindly introduce yourself if you can hear me. Okay, so let's move back to Barbie Ishaku. Mr. Barbie kindly unmute.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you, good evening.
I am Barbie Ishaku, a member of the Tiabu comedian user group. It's nice to be here this evening.
Thank you very much. And Samkwa, are you there? Hello, Samkwa, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Thank you, good evening.
I am Damsan Kwa of the Tiabu Wikimedia user group. Thank everyone for being here today.
Thank you. So Inyani, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Please kindly say your name. Okay, I think her network is not so stable. Okay, naturally.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Coloché Nachali Francis, a member of the Tiabu comedian user group Kaduna. It's nice being here, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. So at this point, I think we appreciate each and every one of us. I think the community, I don't know what is happening. Unlike it, we are supposed to be more than this by now, but please, I think at this point, we'll just take it up from here and then when they come, they will join us halfway. So I will hand over the mic back to Kamby if you have something before we move to John.
Yes, thank you very much. When you started talking, that was when I remembered I didn't introduce myself. So my name is Kamby and I'm happy to have all of you with us today. And without wasting much time, I will just hand over the mic to our guest speaker today, John. And today is actually a video privilege for us to have him because of his tight schedule. He just surrendered some for us, so I'll just hand it over to John. Thank you very much.
Please, let's do it to mute our mics as we welcome John. John, over to you.
Yeah, hi. Yeah, thank you very much for having me, first of all. So my name is Jon Haral Sobi. But when I speak English, I just go by John because that's much easier. Everyone knows the name John. So yeah. I've been a Wikipedian for more than 20 years now. I started in 2005 when I was 16. And you know, it's basically been a huge part of my life ever since. And currently, my day job is in Wikimedia Norway, which is the Norwegian Wikimedia chapter. But I also do a lot of stuff, you know. In addition to my work stuff, I do a lot of stuff as a volunteer still. And one of the things that I've been doing, you know, for almost 20 years is Translate Wiki. So Translate Wiki was started in 2006 and I joined like one or two months after it was opened. So I have a lot of experience with that one as well. Yeah. So first of all, I would like to ask you all some questions. I was gonna do it with a poll in Jitse, but I think it might be easier to just, you know, sort of ask the room. So first of all, do you all have computers when you contribute or do you use mobile phones? Because I know a lot of people in Africa use mobile phones.
Yeah, as for me, I have a computer with me. I didn't know about this.
Yeah, I use computer and phone, John.
Okay, yeah. Because one, there is no mask. Translate Wiki is not very mobile friendly, unfortunately. So in order to contribute there, you really have to use a computer or, you know, at least like a tablet. Because on the small screen, the interface doesn't really work at all, unfortunately. So hopefully, they will get that fixed someday, but right now, the best way to contribute there is by using a computer. Yeah, that was the first question. The second question is, I assume that you're all familiar with editing on Wikipedia or Wikis in general. But are you familiar with editing with Wikitext, like the source editing?
Wikitext, honestly, the terminology is a bit new to me.
Yeah. So, you know, Wikitext is, you know, when you don't use the visual editor, the visual editor is when you, you know, the one that sort of looks like Word or...
It's source editing.
Yeah.
We are familiar with it, John.
Okay, good, good. Because that is like, that is almost like a prerequisite for being able to contribute in Translate Wiki. But let me first of all start by talking about what Translate Wiki actually is. Because if you're not familiar with it, Translate Wiki is... It's a platform for software translation. So it's not about translating random text, it's about translating software, you know. And the reason Translate Wiki was created back in 2006 was to translate MediWiki, which is the software that Wikipedia runs on. But since then, they've also opened up for, you know, translating a lot of other free software projects, including OpenStreetMap and the Wikipedia apps for Android and iOS and a bunch of other things. But yeah, it's mostly, you know, Wikimedia related or Wikimedia adjacent software projects. But some projects also that are not really connected to Wikimedia, which is good. And the way you translate it is that you have what we call messages. And a message can be, you know, basically anything that you see in the interface on Wikipedia is a message. So when you see the edit button, for example, that is a message. That just says edit in English. But it can also have, so most messages are pretty short, like, you know, a few words or maybe a couple of sentences. There are some messages that are longer than that, but the vast majority of messages are pretty short, luckily. But there are also very many messages. So that's the downside, I guess. But there's always stuff to do if you're happy with it. And yeah, Translate Wiki supports more than 600 languages at the moment, which is pretty good, I think. I mean, as you probably know, Wikimedia is one of the most linguistically diverse places on the internet. And Translate Wiki, of course, reflects that in the number of languages it supports. And we also have like, we have a lot of people, both Wikimedia Foundation staff and volunteers such as myself, who help out with, you know, any technical issues that people might face when they're translating. Because, you know, maybe you're translating something and you're like, okay, I can't really, I can't translate this thing properly into my language because I need to know, you know, I need to know what this variable means or something like that. I will talk more about, you know, what variables mean later on. But first of all, let me share my screen here. I trust you can see my screen now. Alright, so first of all, I want to, you know, just give a quick introduction to Wikitext, just in case someone isn't very familiar with it. So here, I just opened up a page in the Tiabu Wikipedia. And I'm, you know, making it as big as I can just to make it easier to see. So I will use this button, it's very useful, it's called syntax highlighting. And it gives the text different colors depending on what you input. So Wikitext is basically, you know, this type of text. So it should show a preview here. Okay, there. So in Wikitext, you have some basic formatting. And the point of Wikitext is to be, you know, pretty easy to understand, which it mostly is at least in normal use cases, but then a lot of things have been added to Wikitext over the years. So when you edit, when you choose source edit in like the English Wikipedia, for example, you will see a lot of like, you know, references and citation templates that make things pretty complicated. But in its basic form, Wikitext is basically like this. So you input normal text here and then you can have italic text by adding two apostrophes. You can have bold text by adding three. And you can add links by doing this. So this is a link. And for links, you can also have, this is a link with a different label. Alright, so when I input this in the Wikitext, it will show like this in the article. So the links go to pages that don't exist, that's why they're blue links, red links, of course. And if they go to existing articles, they will be blue. That's the basic thing. And I think you already know all of this, but yeah. And there's one further thing that you need to know for contributing in Translate Wiki, which is the sort of like template-like syntax or whatever you call it. So in addition to this basic Wikitext, we also have what we call parser functions. And that's a pretty technical term. But what a parser function does is that it shows text based on what you input. So I will give an example. Say that we have a number. So and then this is an example of what you might find in Translate Wiki. So let's say that the English text is, "I have dollar one child." And whenever you encounter a dollar one or dollar two or something like that in a text in Translate Wiki, that is a variable. And what that means is that the dollar one will be replaced with something else. So in this case, dollar one will probably be replaced with a number. So we don't know how many children the person has. So in that case, the English text will actually say, "I have dollar one" and then two of those curly quotation marks, curly quotes, plural, dollar one, child, children. So when that displays, if we say that dollar one is just one, it was, the result will be, "I have one child." But if you replace the number with, let's say, three, in my case, it will say, "I have three children." So yeah, that is what this one does. So for plural, it has three parts normally in English. It might have more in different languages. Let me just ask, how does plurals and numbers work in Tiabu? Do you have a singular and plural or do you have singular, dual and plural or...
Yeah, like in Tiabu, there are about eight ways of pluralization. Yeah, so it depends on the definite article of the noun or the adjective. And then it also depends on if you are using an adjective before a noun, then the definite article. Okay, the question is on pluralization. So it depends totally on the particular word. Like the word for child is unguan, but then for the plural, it's unman. That's a totally different word entirely.
Exactly. So, but you don't have like, there's no difference if there's like two children or five children. You will use the same word if it's more than one, right?
Yeah, the same word, the same word.
Exactly. Because some languages have different words if they're like, you know, two to five children and then a different word if there's like six or more children, for example. But I guess in Tiabu, it's the same as in, as in English, basically. So that's good, that makes things easy. Yeah. So for Tiabu's case, then the plural will have three parts. So the first part is this thing that comes after plural column, which will normally be like, you know, like I said, a variable, like dollar one, dollar two, something like that. And then the second part is the singular version of the word. And the third part is the plural version. So and you will always know which word you will translate. So it's not a problem that, you know, different words have different ways of pluralizing them. It's, you know, it will basically always be like this format for this. Another thing that you might encounter when you translate in Translate Wiki is the, another keyword, which works almost like plural, but that is the gender word. And I will try to think of an example. Yeah, this user is an administrator. So that is the English text and will be, this user is an administrator. And for English, it doesn't matter if the user is male or female, they will always use the same word. But in some languages, the words will be different. So in German, for example, the word for user is benutzer if the user is a male, but it's benutzerin if it's female. So the English text will actually not just say, this user is an administrator, it will say, this gender colon dollar one user is an administrator. And then in German, you will say, well, I'm not sure about the entire sentence, but let's just, these, these, benutzer, benutzerin. So what's happening here is that for the dollar one, you will actually, the software will insert the username of the user that you're talking about. Because you don't know which user you're talking about when you translate the message, you know. It could be any user on any wiki. So the software will replace dollar one with the username. And then depending on the gender that the user has chosen in their settings, it will either show the male version or the female version. And it can also have like a third option here. So in German, I think they normally write it like this. So here, you will see, if the user is male, it will display benutzer. If the user is female, it will display benutzerin. And if the user hasn't chosen their gender in the settings, it will show benutzer and then a star and then in. So then again, a question about Tiabu. In Tiabu, do you normally use different words for, you know, a person, depending on if the person is male or female or do you normally use the same words? No gender, okay. Yeah, that's good. That makes things easier again. So then in Tiabu, you will just translate it just like in English. So this gender one user is an administrator. So in the case that you don't have several versions there, it will just display user for any, no matter what gender the user is. And then when you display it, it will show like this. So you won't actually see any of the curly braces, of course. So the software handles all of that for you. So as long as you know these things, like the basic Wikitext with how to do links and how this plural and gender thing works, I think you're all set to go to translate things in Translate Wiki. So let's get on to that. So in order to create an account in Translate Wiki, you need to visit translatewiki.net, which is the URL for Translate Wiki. I'll just paste it into the chat here in case I haven't visited it. So the main page of Translate Wiki looks like this. It displays some information about, you know, how many projects there are, how many translators, 18,000. And how many messages you can translate, which is 126,000, which is a pretty big number. And then, of course, on the right-hand side here, there's the form for how to sign up. And everyone has to go through this form. So let's do it. The first part, and a lot of people, I think they just don't notice it or they choose not to do something about it. But it says here, choose languages you know, and then it says English because my browser is set to English now. Here, it is pretty important that you press the choose another language button and it will open the language selector. Which is pretty slow for me, unfortunately, there. And then you can just type to search for your language. And you don't have to type it in English, you can type it in any language, but I think in both Tiabu and English, it's called Tiabu. So there, we choose Tiabu. And then I would suggest that you actually uncheck the box that says English because it doesn't really make sense. Yeah, because another thing to note is that everything in Translate Wiki is translated from English. So English is the source language for all the projects. But it can also choose to display other languages you know. So if you know, you know, Igbo or Yoruba or Hausa or whatever, you can choose that language as well and you can choose to display that along with the message. I will demonstrate that in a while. Alright, so you choose your username. I would suggest that you use your same, the same username you have in Wikipedia. And by the way, this account is not connected to Wikipedia. So you know, you have to create a separate account in Translate Wiki. But you can use the same username, of course. So I will say, my username is JonharalSobiTiabDeMo. Password. Email and create an account. Alright, so it actually pulled in my picture. That is based on my email, it's, yeah, complicated system. And then you click translate. And then you click translate. Because uh once you like uh input your username and stuff, you have to do what we call test translations here. So it will give it its interface and it will do, I think, up to twenty test translations. Uh, and then you have to wait to get approved. So an administrator like myself has to actually approve every new account that comes into Translate Wiki. Uh, and this is both to um, but it is mainly to prevent spam, because we don't want uh spam accounts. Uh, but we also want to check that um you probably know how to translate into your language. So let's see, I'll just add some translator. Okay, so admin, I will translate admin. Obviously, I don't know any TIP, so I will I will translate into Norwegian, but. Alright, so uh let let me first uh explain a little bit about the interface that you see here. Because this is like the main translate translation interface you will see in Translate Wiki. So this is a good practice for how uh how it actually works. Oh, by the way, i- if you didn't notice, uh there is a button here called try another. So if you get a very long message like this one, then you think like, okay, this is too difficult or too long. You can just press the try another button and you will get a different building, uh different uh different message. So yeah, uh here here we see a message with um with an example of a parameter. So here it says the file dollar one does not exist. Uh, so here dollar one will be replaced with a file name, you know. Uh, and so in the interface here, you have the source message, the, you know, English original message. And in the box, you will obviously input uh the translation into TIP. Uh, and you have some buttons here that make it makes it easier to insert uh certain things. So when a parameter appears, for example, you can just click this one to make it insert dollar one. Uh, and there are also other things that can be inserted like uh URLs or uh, you know, uh HTML tags, which you might encounter. I didn't cover that yet, but yeah. Uh, so yeah, that's the main part. Uh, and on the side here, um this part is what we call the message documentation. And the message documentation is meant to be like uh, you know, an explanation to you about uh what this message actually means, to give you some more context. So for example, here it says that parameters, dollar one, a file name. Uh, so that's an explanation of uh, you know, uh what the things actually mean. Uh, so whenever a message has parameters like dollar one, dollar two, something like that, uh the documentation will always tell you what the parameter will be. Uh, so that that should make it easier for you to translate it if you know, you know, what the thing actually means. And you see below that, there are some suggestions. Uh, and suggestions are based on what we call translation memory. So uh we already have some existing translations for, well, many things uh into TIP. And the translation memory remembers that and it says that, okay, uh the trans- there is a translation that's pretty similar to this one. So uh here's a suggestion for that you might use. Uh, and in some cases, the suggestions are like a hundred percent match, which means that the the English source text is identical uh for two separate messages, which can happen a lot. Uh, and in that case, you can just press the suggestion and it will insert the uh, you know, uh the text here. And the suggestions, but even if it's not a hundred percent match, the suggestions are still useful, because it will show you, you know, uh what terminology, like which words uh other translators into uh TIP uh have chosen. Um, yeah. Uh, and then also you see here, uh it shows the message in other languages as well. So is is Yoruba the, you know, the majority language in where where TIP is spoken or does it vary?
Majority language is Hausa.
Okay, yeah. So i- if there had been a translation into Hausa, I think that would show up here as well. But nobody has translated this text into Hausa, so uh that's why it doesn't show up here. Um, yeah, uh those are the main parts of the interface. So let me just finish some more translations here, uh do it do it in Norwegian again. Oh, and sometimes you will encounter like weird things like this, you know, it says curly curly um, what do you call it, curly braces, in ellipsis. When you find stuff like that, um don't try to translate the stuff that is inside it. Uh, just keep it as it is, uh you can just, you know, copy and paste it, uh if that's uh, that's easier. There. Uh, but in most cases, the the messages are, you know, pretty short and pretty simple. So this file can't be used. There. And I think I will stop there. But after you've done something like uh twenty translations, uh you will get a message saying that, okay, please wait uh until someone approves you. So now I will actually, I will give you a peek behind the curtain to see what that looks like. So for me, as a translator on uh on Translate Wiki, it looks like this, uh like I see a lot of users uh who have completed some translations. And the point here is that I can see uh both their uh, oh, their email server, so I probably shouldn't. Uh, yeah, I I can see a comparison of the translations that you made and the translations that already exist in Translate Wiki. And that way, even though I don't know any TIP, uh I can still tell if your translations are similar to uh the translations that already exist, you know. Uh, and that way I can uh, you know, make and make a qualified estimate that uh uh whether or not uh you actually know the language you're trying to translate into. Because some people, you know, they do this and they translate into the wrong language or they basically don't know the language they're trying to translate into. Uh, and we would like to prevent that. So, yeah. Um, and once, once you've done that, uh and once you're approved, uh you will get into the like uh the main interface. So let me just uh log into my normal account here. In order to uh, actually show you what it looks like, let's see. Oh, no, wait. Alright, so here I am uh logged in with my normal account, um not the test account that I just um just used. And uh in place of the regi- registration form, uh we now have like uh, you know. Oh, it's in Norwegian again, sorry. Right, so here uh it shows some statistics for what you've done. Uh, I don't think this number is correct for me. I don't think I've done almost ten thousand translations this month. But yeah, uh in theory, this should be correct, like uh it will show how many translations you've made. And then uh, you know, some translation, some statistics about the language uh that you uh translate into as well. So uh the main thing is the translate button, uh I would say. And the translate button um takes you to this page uh called uh language statistics. So let me just choose TIP instead of English. Show statistics. Okay, so this page is a list of all the different projects that are supported in uh Translate Wiki. Uh, and you're prob- you're probably not familiar with most of them, but you might see some familiar names here and there. So for example, you have the Commons Android App. That's a pretty popular one. And if you scroll further down, I mean, the list is alphabetic, you know. So when you scroll further down, you get to Media Wiki. Uh, and Media Wiki is the main thing that we're gonna uh focus on, I think. Uh, and you can click expand and you see there there are like several, you know, subparts of Media Wiki as well. Uh, and it also shows uh, you know, statistics for that uh, for for those message groups, as we call them, uh for your language. So for all of Media Wiki, there are fifty-two thousand uh messages to translate. Uh, and forty-seven thousand of those are not yet translated into TIP. Which might sound like a lot, uh but do remember that fifty-two thousand is very much. And there are only like a few languages, I think less than five languages, that consistently are able to keep this uh statistics uh at a hundred percent. So most languages are less than that. Yeah, uh so Media Wiki Core is the main thing that we should uh focus on, uh probably. So that one also has uh several parts. And I would say that you should probably focus on uh the one called Media Wiki Core uh at first. Because that is the most important one and uh, you know, it's basically the basis for everything else in uh Media Wiki, in Wikimedia. So, yeah, uh so let's click that one. And when you click that, uh you get to the actual, you know, um translate interface, which is very similar to the one that I um showed you before, but now you have some more uh buttons and uh things here. So by default, uh the interface uh shows you untranslated messages, because it wants you to, you know, translate more. Uh, but you can also choose to uh display only outdated messages, uh which are messages that have been updated, like the English original text has been updated, so you might need to update the translation as well. But maybe you don't need to. Uh, okay, so this message, uh it used to say view missing pages, but now it says start a new page. So in that case, you probably need to redo the entire translation here. But in in most cases, when a message changes, it's basically, you know, uh they will change a word here and there or uh, you know, add a sentence at the end or something like that. So it's pretty easy to update. But in some cases, the message will, like this one, uh the message will have uh changed completely, so you need to redo it from scratch, basically. Uh, and it can also cho- show uh the messages that have already been translated. Here, so here is an example of the plural, you know, with the parameter and stuff. Uh, and I I think I didn't mention it before, but whenever you see plural or gender in the original text, um do not try to translate that into your language. Um, let us stay in English like as plural or gender, because if we translate it, it won't work, uh basically. So here for uh category, uh the word is sa in singular and ca in plural, in uh in TIP. Um, yeah, uh another thing that we should probably talk about is that uh, well, you see uh that a word is green here. And that's actually from the tool that I made uh myself, uh called the Terminology Gadget. Uh, and the Terminology Gadget, um I started um, I started making it because during Arctic Nut, I think it might actually have been you come by uh or someone else from some.
Yeah, yeah, it was me.
Yeah. Uh, you mentioned that um uh i- in your language, uh you don't, you know, you don't really have the terminology for words like file or category, like uh there's no agreed-upon translation for those terms. And that makes it even harder to translate uh technical terms, you know, like this. Uh, so inspired by that, I created this tool uh which is meant to keep terminology consistent within the language. Uh, so uh whenever you come across a word uh with a like a green or yellow uh background, you can uh put the mouse over it and it will show you like, okay, category should be translated as sa in in TIP. Uh, and the nice thing is that you can do this for any word, basically. So uh let's see, here, pages in category. Uh, so here, someone has added um terminology for pages, uh should be in what? In uh could be either of those, uh I guess, depending on context. Uh, and category again, should be sa. And when you come across a a word that, you know, for example, here, hidden categories. And they're like, okay, hidden, uh well, hidden might not be the best example. Let's see. Oh, about, um, no. Let me try and find a better example. Ah, you've already added so many uh so many words, it's beautiful, I like it. Uh, okay, so list. In in case someone doesn't know how to translate list, you know, uh they can do this. Uh, but uh, so incomplete doesn't have a a color here. So if there are several translations of incomplete or if you're, you know, if it's uh something that translators might be uh confused about or, you know, uh you can choose to add a new uh terminology for it. And you do this by hovering the word again and then pressing the plus button. And then it gives you like this interface, it says uh, so in English, the term is incomplete, uh but a translation should be, you know, not completed or something like that. So you'll input that there. And then when you save it, I won't save this, because this is not actually TIP. Uh, when you save it, uh, well, I can do it and I can remove it later. Click publish. Now it has a green background and it says not completed here. So you can do this to um, you know, uh tell other translators how they should translate uh the words that they come across. Uh, and in addition to this, uh you can also um, I'm gonna delete this again. Uh, in addition to this, you can also choose to start a discussion about the word. So if you don't know how to translate incomplete uh and you want to discuss it with other translators, you can click this start a discussion button. And you can say, ah, how should we translate this word? There are so many different options. Click post. And then it will have an orange background, which tells you, okay, there's an ongoing discussion about this word uh on the portal talk page. And in that discussion, you can come to agreement with the other people who translate into your language, that, okay, um incomplete should be translated as this and this. And uh when you've completed that discussion, you can, you know, uh add the word that you agree on uh to the, to the gadget. So, yeah. I will remove this again. Let's see, Delete. There. All right. Yeah. What else? I've been talking for a long time now, so, does anyone have any questions so far?
In case anybody doesn't have a question, I've been enjoying the tutorial. It's as if you should just continue to learn more things.
Yeah, and in fact, the question I wanted to ask, you have already addressed that before now, so, I think, I wanted to ask for the question, for example, you want to highlight, like where this green, is it green now, it's showing? For example, if the word is not so correct and you wanted to go back and re-edit it, how do you do that? But you have already demonstrated that I can see how to navigate through that, so thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Another thing you can do with the Terminology Gadget is that when you do click Edit, by doing this, Edit Term, there should be, oh no. I think it's only when you add a new term, perhaps. Maybe I should fix that. Oh, yeah, no, it's there. I just didn't notice it, sorry. All right, so you see underneath here, it says, there's a button, "Search for existing translations of May". When you click this button, you come to a page called "Search Translations". And this is a very useful tool inside Translate Wiki. So here you can search for, well, in this case, the word "may", and it will search for English messages that contain the word "may", but it will display the, the TIP translations of those messages. And I think, yeah, I think it also shows some... Oh, no. I mean, may is a very, very common word. Maybe just incomplete instead? Oh, no results. Okay, let's do category then. I know there are translations for that. Oh, no results. That's weird. Oh, translation, sorry, translations from English. Okay. Let me just go back. So TIP here, category, translations from English. Okay, here. Here are the results when the English message has the word "category", and then it displays the TIP translations of that, which is sa in most cases. Yeah. So, yeah, I think these are all the basics for how to translate in Translate Wiki. But we should probably go over some of the, some of the settings as well. Most of the settings in the Wiki are, you know, the same as you will find in Wikipedia, but there are some like specialized translation settings that you should be aware of. So for example, here, if we go down, oh, no, it's not here. I think it's in the editing section. Yes, here. So, just to show again, you go to Preferences by clicking the user icon, then Preferences. And then you choose the Editing tab and you scroll down a bit to find the translation options. And this is very useful because here you can choose Assistant Languages. So here I have chosen, oh, actually, I have German first, I shouldn't have that. So here I have NN, which is, so my language is Norwegian Boogmal, which has the language code NB, but I don't need to put that here because that's my language. But NN is Norwegian Nynost, which is, you know, the same language, but a different written standard. And then I have SV for Swedish and DA for Danish. Because Norwegian, Swedish and Danish are very, very similar languages. So for me, it's useful to see how other, how the translators into Swedish or Danish have translated things. Because since they're very similar, I can get inspiration from how they translated it. But here you can choose any language and you just need to know the language code, obviously. So if you know, for example, YO, YO, HSA, HA, IGBO, IG, and so forth. So you can add those and then click Save. And then when you go back to the Translator Interface, which you can find, by the way, in the main menu by clicking Translate. And then you go back to, oh, then you come to this page with the selection of groups again. So let's go back to Media Wiki Core here. So now that I've chosen those six languages as my assistant languages, it will display those, if, like, if there is a translation into any of those languages, they will display in this section here, in other languages. So here I see Danish at the top and then the Yoruba translation and then the IGBO translation. So, you know, even though they're not similar, it might help you if you know, you know, one of these languages, to say that, okay, so block, they've translated block as, you know, well, something. And then you're like, okay, so in this case, it means, you know, blocking a user, not a block that people can live in, or, you know, a block of houses or whatever. So, yeah, it can help you understand the text better by looking at the existing translations. So here for Continue, that has translations also in Danish, Yoruba, IGBO. Yeah. Some other things we should probably cover quickly here is, you know, how to get help in Translate Wiki. Let me see, did I lose you? Oh, here's meeting. You can still hear me, right?
Yeah, I was still here.
Okay, good. I thought I closed the window by accident. Yeah. So in case you don't understand the message and/or if you're having trouble translating it, you see this button at the bottom here, "Need more help? Ask for more information". That is, you know, that actually opens a link to Wikimedia Fabricator, which is like the technical bug system that we use in Wikimedia. Like if you file a, if you want to report a bug or an error, you use Fabricator. So this is if you think that there's something wrong with the English message, you should use that button. But if you need some more general help, you should probably instead use the Support Forum. And you can find the link to the Support Forum in the main menu. And just in case you don't see the main menu, because it might be hidden, you will also find it with the, you know, these three lines at the top. And I always choose to display it, so that's how my setting is, at least. So you can go to the Support Forum and there you can just create a new topic, asking, you know, "Hey, I need help with this message. Can someone help me explain what this means?" or whatever. And then you should remember, if you do that, remember to include like a link to the message that you're trying to translate. So, Help, well, you should probably choose a better topic than Help, but this is just an example. "I need help translating this message", and then add a link. Just copy this one for example, as an example.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
So yeah, I've covered a lot of things, but I think after a certain time, it gets hard to follow along, but I hope you understood most of it. And like, if you need any help, please feel free to reach out to me or someone else, or use the Support Forum in Translate Wiki, of course. So, yeah. Or any questions now, before we finish?
Yeah, thank you very much, John. So if there's anyone who has any questions, please feel free to reach out because you may not always find him. After he leaves here, he's going to immerse himself in work after all this. He's actually a rep, so please feel free to ask any questions. And if we don't have questions, we can always, you know, ask maybe through Telegram or one other channel or the other. Someone would actually be there to help us, to answer your questions. Any questions? Any questions?
Okay, so I, thank you very much, John. I think before now, I thought, based on the little knowledge I have, I thought I could actually navigate the whole Translate Wiki, you know, interface without any challenges. But now, having gotten another kind of knowledge on this one, I think it is worth the time and we appreciate you so much. So now I just want to ask more or less like a professional kind of advice from you. Now, you know, most of the participants here, for example, we all speak TIP. So now, is it advisable for everyone to be an editor on the Translate Wiki for the fact that somebody is translating on the Wikipedia? Remember, the TIP, the TIP language also have other dialects. So now what I'm saying now, do you advise that, okay, everybody should contribute on the Translate Wiki?
Honestly, it might not be for everyone because it is pretty technical, like you have to have a certain technical knowledge in order to translate well. So, and the TIP Wikipedia, Wikimedia community is, you know, relatively small. So I think it makes sense for, you know, some people who are, understand more technical stuff to translate in Translate Wiki, while others, you know, might focus more on, you know, translating articles in the Wikipedia. But I mean, everyone can do both things, you know, that's probably the best, but realistically, it might be, much better to kind of, you know, divide tasks between people in that way.
So, thank you very much. So I believe for those of us who are on the call right now, for the fact that we have the knowledge on the Translate Wiki does not give us at least a straight pass for us to go there and start translating because it involves a lot of technicalities. And unless, if you are a neutral speaker or at least somebody with at least a quite knowledge of the language for you to be advised to go to the Translate Wiki. So it is not meant for everyone. So on this call again, we ought to have other languages who are also here, listening to you. So all that is being explained as regarding the TIP, so also it applies to other languages. So just follow the whole format as it is, as it implies in TIP and other languages. So also you can translate, you can transmit that to other languages. So that is just my question, John, and I thank you for that clarification. So thank you very much.
And that reminded me of, you know, something that I should mention, which is that if you come across a message that you don't know how to translate, like if it's too difficult, it's better to just skip that message and not translate it, instead of adding an incorrect translation. Because if there is an incorrect translation, that means that it won't show up in the list of untranslated messages. And it might take a long time before someone else discovers that message in order to correct it. So if you, you know, if you don't know how to do it, it's better to just skip it and let someone else deal with it later on, I think.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so at this point, we are still opening for questions. JJ, I was thinking maybe you have a question for John, because you know, sometimes you just run to us, asking questions. Now, this is, this, John is one of the pioneer experts. When you come to the Translate Wiki, he has been there for a very long time. So whatsoever technicalities you are having relating to the TIP translation, here is John, please ask, so we can address some of the things here. If you have any, but if you don't, trust me, nobody will penalize you. And I don't think we have other language. Okay, Rekondi is also here. I don't know if he's contributing to the Translate Wiki on the TIP language. Or maybe he have another question, but I don't think there is it. So thank you very much, John. And you know, for some of us who are here, they are just seeing the whole thing, they're like, ah, what is this whole about? Because they are not familiar with this. So it is only quite a few number of us who are actually active on the Translate Wiki. So a lot of the community are just in it for the very first time and I know some that will pick challenge to also begin to contribute, so they are all welcome. So thank you very much, John. We appreciate you.
And I would also advise it to, you know, for those of you who do translate in Translate Wiki, if you're not sure how to translate the term, it's a very, it's a very good idea to, you know, ask the other community members. So either on Wikipedia itself, or maybe you have like, you know, a Telegram group or a WhatsApp group or whatever that you use to communicate, you should ask other people for input there. Okay, how should I translate category? We have several options, so which one should I choose? So try to involve other speakers, even if they're not very technical, you can still involve them in, you know, deciding what terms to use, for example.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I think we have all these platforms. We have the Telegram group, WhatsApp group, where anybody can ask question on the group and get a response on the group. So thank you very much. So at this point, I don't know, I'll just hand over the mic back to Kamby because I think I've exhausted almost all what I want to say. So Kamby.
Nice, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, Chris, and thank you very much once again, Ian. It didn't come to my mind earlier that Norwegian is a Germanic language and Germanic languages don't have their JAS sound, apart from Norwegian. Yeah, so we appreciate once again, tack, tack, tack. So since our community members don't have any questions, maybe we'll call it a day and then we go to rest and wake up tomorrow morning strong. So thank you all for being with us to the very end. Once again, my name is Kamby and this is the closing for our mental program assist session in person online. Thank you very much. In TIP, we usually say "genjgjeng", that's another time, that's our word for goodbye.
So, but before we go now, okay, Kamby still.
Yeah, I wanted to ask how is a bye-bye in Norwegian? Is it like cheers? Yeah, I wanted to ask how is, you say bye-bye in Norwegian? Is it like cheese?
Oh, no, we say hade, which actually means, it's short for hade bra, which means have it good. But hade by itself really only means have it.
Okay.
Yeah. So have it.
Yeah, thank you. Nice.
Thank you very much for, for having me, by the way. It's
Thank you very much.
So I hope, I hope it was useful for you.
All right. And we hope when next we call, when next we call on you, please, you are going to spare your time again and please ask us. We promise we'll not keep you long. We promise.
Nice one.
All right, John. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. So on this note, I think we'll just call, we'll just call it a day. Thank you everyone for participating on this session. And to you, JJ, we appreciate you. You are always there, always active. Thank you very much. And naturally, thank you. I know you are there behind the, 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 is that the peak now? You are here behind that too. So thank you very much. And Danjuma, thank you, appreciate you. Dokas, thank you, we see you. And Favro Haruna, we appreciate you. We see Kalian, thank you. Mrs. Halima Waziri, we appreciate you. Rekondi, I don't know where you are at the moment, but thank you very much. And to our brother Samkwa, we appreciate you. So thank you each and every one of us for joining this call and we hope to see us again on our next call. Thank you and do have a good night's rest. Bye-bye.
Bye. Yes.
If we, if we want.